Now it is 6:00 AM.
If I don't write that? That we all can start. One more break to me. May I say nothing? May I say nothing? May I say anything? Just say anything. Yeah. You say nothing?
Say nothing.
Yes. She didn't hear any. She explained. She explained. Yeah, last thing. And there was that. We have. Don't say it. Yes. How many? Is your best plan?
Yeah.
She don't have. Well, the sister's.
They still have.
If they don't need to say that one.
I think it's. I don't know.
Okay. Right here.
Of course. And I had all this energy for a block. Change. And. And.
So. It's.
Before. For.
That's more. This is tech. In that example. That's why he did it.
He doesn't.
But that's made it work.
You are. Twice. This world.
All right. I guess. You're back in the world.
I'm. I've no way.
Are you resent your.
Let's see what it was.
So.
And.
Oh, yes, I need. We probably.
So. This is. Certainly.
Now we get. Now we. Yeah, but that there will be. I'm sure.
I just give it to you. So. So. You don't.
This happened. And. That's. Three weeks ago. But I don't want that. It's. She wants somebody. Very important. My next son.
Yeah. Yeah. They show you.
We're. Well. That's. We got. I wonder. Who's getting started? Yeah. He's off. Because he has to stay over there and let it sit out on our backs. Because people rest around the earth like. The one. What's going to do again? But. So we have the tractor. Which. Now which? So someone stole a battery on the tractor. They can take it out. So what would? You know, because that's what they need to do. Someone carries. So one. She must see. You know, he said it probably needs some points and. He does have. But. He's. Make sure that. They don't get off the bus. But once. Before they work a lot of money. Then we make sure first of all. How. Yeah. All right. Let's see. But you know, without seeing it. It would make a lot of sense to. There will be. All of that one. And then. See. It's. I have.
Yeah. I believe. Sounds like. The hotel was missing. Or at six oh six. About. Two thousand forty tables. Six or seven. And. Council. We're all. With the opportunity to serve our citizens. Serve our city. And you could give the government your wish. The point of anywhere that you set it up. Build your plans and your purposes. And thank you for that. Love you. Thank you. Love us. Because. First. I mean. Are you. Want to. Please? President. This is. Right. At the office. Senator. And Senator. Senator. Bush. My nation. And I'm a god. Invisible. For the. And just. Spout. All right. We. All. Professor. Bill. Council. 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 There's. Where? Council. Hall. Council. Council. Red House. Council. Jefferson. Council. Jacob.
Right.
Council. All right. City. Home for citizen requests. We have. Five citizens. Coming for us tonight. Sergeant Thomas. About that. Um. Chris Weaver. About our cameras. David Roman. About the World Series. Also request. And that's. About. About the personnel. And more immediately about. I'm going to say the. I'm. We have three or five minutes. Just sleep. And. I'll tell. Questions. Sergeant Thomas. Are you present? Hi. This is Chris. It's all. From. I think. Yeah. Yeah. I suspect. We're. I want to say.
That turning on.
Okay. No worry. All right. So. First.
All right. Pretty much. So. I think. So. Coming. Side of the desk. We've been working really hard on the last. Year. First of all, my name is Chris Weaver. Our operation manager of the company. Here in Royal. Was in. License. Growers. Here in Royal for the last four years. We've been leading the industry. Research. And production. We've been collaborating. Where's the battle? I'm from discovery lab. I had a research capacity. And I'm going to look at the correction. Cannabinoids. And also brother. Will finish. Cannabinoids that are that. It's very precious. Which we call. Parties. With me today is a CEO of a company. Whether they are. And one of our partners. For medical management. American cannabis company. Allison. So our plan moving forward is to. Bring integrated facilities here itself. The facility would extraction. Cultivation. Transport. Product packaging. Spin through your case as well. American cannabis company has been working in this industry for two years. They've been leading the way. And. Cannabis. U.S. And. They are owner operators as well. Consulting company. Medical cannabis. And Colorado, which they are one. Four companies that lead. Organic quality. Of cannabis. Who also partnering with Core Campus. Which is a pharmaceutical company. To bring pharmaceutical grade products to sell. These products of the futures. Pills. And. Then the last. Capabilities that only. American cannabis. And. Can help provide. The state of America. So. That's. Kind of what we plan on doing. While we. Know is. Is a powerpoint of our collaboration together. What we have been able to do in the state of Alabama. The one company has also created the first cross breed genetic. Now in history, which we think they have blossomed. It was accepted by the part of our culture. May have twenty twenty one. So not only have we been a leadership in the industry. We look forward to being leaders in the cannabis industry. And. We look forward to working with everyone who is interested to. You know, into. Our. Adventures. So. With that. What they. Feel.
Our. Brothers. In. Smaller. Guys. On your. Round. So. Yes. Tell me exactly what. You. Do you.
Absolutely. So. That's what we have to do. Is to cultivate cannabis. Medical cannabis. Higher THC cannabis. So that we can extract higher THC. From the cannabis. To go with the products. It would be extracting to the. Well. You know, have facilities here and so. Which would. Would house all of the. Licenses, which would be. Cultivation. Processing. Packaging. Testing. Cannabis transport and a dispensary. So we have a whole cabinet for facility here now. We look to hire twenty to twenty five employees initially. And. Depending on the progression of the program, which is going to take a while. Because of how the program is set up. We don't want to overbuild. We don't want to underbuild. We want to be able to handle the market as market grows. So that. That's our. That's our. Stance right now. So. You know, building a facility inside. So. It's looking at the market. Housing press. And. Same. That's. That's.
Thanks. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions? I'm. I'm. Mr. President. Sounds like you at least look at the risks that exist. To be able to track what you're doing. Cultivating process of packaging.
Absolutely.
Are you talking on a wholesale level of distribution of products? Or retailable?
So. So we're looking at retail. We possibly could sell to other dispensaries. Throughout the state. But we're mainly focused on dispensaries that. That we're going to operate. Which we plan up with one area cell. One in Mobile. One in Tuscaloosa.
So are you talking rent time or just distribution?
No. It's going to be a franchise.
Or licenses?
It's. You can't do your license. Or what you. Under the integrated facility, it's all five licenses. Which is dispensary, testing. Cannabis transport, cultivation, processing. And so we would be using all of that. But we'd only have three dispensaries to give the. Cause of the size and the pharmaceutical program. The times you can take to get people in the program. You know, we have. We. We do have a plan to. You know, expand out the loyal banner. To. Give their pockets as well.
Government. When you're talking locally. Countywide. Statewide. Reasonably.
So. So the. The radiation on that one dispensary per county. So we chose so one dispensary for Dallas County. For the old and test places as well. Spinning down on there as. As the program fills. On there.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to ask you a question. Your. Do you have any more of these? Because if you didn't get it. But you didn't get this. It's not.
So I don't have to put it out. I did send you all the electronic copy.
Did you?
Yes. Several. Councillors. You know. I didn't send it a little late. Second.
Oh, you're saying.
I did. The copy.
Okay. That we got.
Also included is. Is a letter of intent. In the electronic copy. And that you'll have as well. And. What it is, what it states is that we get a license. Our intention is to quit the facility that we get licensed here. Everything. Yeah. So. It's. And. We'd like to. Get approval to. Per that in the city. If we get a license. For. That will get. Which.
So.
I just want to know how one location.
We have been looking at locations. But I also wanted to tell the city. Council. You all had any. So many questions or any kind of. Idea. I didn't know exactly. You all have certain area that you all want us to put into. But there are facilities that we're looking at. There's not a whole lot of options here. That, you know, are existing structures. But we have found a structure that we can use. And. Yes. So. To.
So will it be located back in a manufacturer area or mostly. Sites out of. Out of the. If I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, it's. The location is. It's right off of. Block pass. Eight.
Back. Eight. Oh.
Yeah. Our. Retail location. Like have. Actually. Get the location. But whatever this. Council.
Any other questions? All right. So we have. Nice to. Have. So. By all. So. They would have. Thank you all for coming for us. And. I hope we will take this up. Sure. And we have. Appreciate it. Yes.
I have. Ask questions that I can call. This. Not. Absolutely. Could all be emailed. Or whatever. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And that's all the list is Stephen. Roman. For all services. All. Those. I don't have. Ah. Good. All right. I know we tried to. Don't. The World Series. That. And. See. Stand. We're. Getting. On. In. So. Take. Where is it? It's. So. We have. Where is my? Any donation? All right. Um. Where is that? Where is the World Series? You beat off. Mayor's office. For.
Oh.
For. Everybody. You got my. Any. Y'all have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
It'd be. How much? We. We. Now we need to. How much? We try to.
Yeah. We're trying to. Trying to get an air. Be. Some of the fans can't stay the whole Saturday. So. Keys are. So we have. Air.
Down. For time.
That's real.
I just remember. We. The last.
He's been.
Well. So. That was a part of our request. And of course. Our next. Yes. Exactly. Right. I was. So. You. Said. It was like. They. Was. Free. Now. I was also. About the increase. So I'm not sure. What's about that. But. Okay. There's. Just as we said in that meeting, there's only a. Finally. You know. Preparation. Probably. I.
He's in the town. For chat. How many keys?
That's all.
Now we're including that.
A lot of. Gas. Construction.
Okay. All right. Question. What can I make a state? For these kids going to all stars. These ones should be reserved in the city. And not be in. Use a recreation. We had reserve rooms. Pay for all of their travel. Get three meals a day, as well as the coaches. As well to make sure they have their food upon us. If they're leaving all of the fourth, that you are reserve rooms. Because.
Well, the air. Be. Third.
Yeah. Because y'all are about to miss that room. Because you waited so long. That's the thing. Hotels usually block out floors. For teams to get a great price. They miss it. Just because. Can all feel it again. Can I ask you a question? And. And the kids have a family banging. And the city covers the travel. The money to the in recreation they get. Since they have already done their part, they can do recreation. They transfer to take care of everything that they take care of. But. Trying to get a huge donation up like that right now. It's going to be way.
That's. We can. We can request a transfer document for Tuesday's data.
We did that the last time. We got an email saying it was not needed. They were going to take care of. That's the reason why I did not come back to us. Here we are. We got kids going to the World Series. And we're this. The two weeks out. And.
So can you. Can you send a request? To the mayor's office requesting a transfer document for Tuesday? If they. They. Have. So we. We need. We need someone for Tuesday. So we. Right. Please.
And. If y'all got.
Yeah.
If y'all want. Recreation. See that they. Send it. Because you don't have a representative from the city. So along with y'all to make sure y'all sign. And I'll back something on this chapter.
Um. Is that. Both of those? That. It's both of those. All of them. So let's be honest. Next. Those. They're not. Rules. Say we. Me and Coach Cole. Kind of. Everything else.
Can we pay for all the beautiful presentation? But. We got. You. You receive. You should have a. River.
To me.
It's. I mean, the reason why they need it is because they were told there was not any money. In. That. I. So.
Did y'all remember? Six. I don't want to give it to. Team. Man. He said. You know. Hey. And. We went to y'all. Good.
Thank y'all.
Yeah. You have a question?
Yes. My question was. We. Love what you do. Love what you do. Kids. Support y'all. My question is. Do y'all have any. Contact with the. Recreation. Director. Out there? Or who else? So. I had these teams that are going to these playoffs.
We did. We've been going to the year, but on the. On the calendar, we're going to World Series. We didn't know. So we end up. We played the same time, just like everybody else. I think the other team was fun. For the same time. We were. We didn't know. So. Now. We got. Like. I've been. I've played. Trying to. You.
Well. Tell.
We. That was horrible.
Um. They. Don't work.
What? Any. Other questions? Comments? Who. We're going to. This. We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Okay. If. Say Tuesday. Where. What's going to be? Be Tuesday? Was there a deadline as when you. You need to have a hundred for the air. You mean?
I didn't know. Have to pay out. Because. You go. If we reserve. Play. On. Call. And then you got realized that. Lomington is a little like so. And I have a lot of hotels and stuff like that. The African people. So. If I'm. Calling. And nobody can help. I'm just bringing my. Special. Peers. And we'll make sure.
Second. Good.
All right. That's all the best. We have. Lots of. Too. Um. To. First. May I? This. I. Sit. Yes. And. I. I. Not. People. Say. So. I can say. Yes. The. Something. Reminded. But. Although. I was. Trying to keep. Most. I rather check. That. Also. Problems. Well. Right. And. Right. Right, yeah, so so we will, we will hear this. And and just remind the council that there there is a base confidential sense of inflation that possibly takes place forward. So so just be careful not when we mention, ask questions we ask. Mentioned that we would probably not ask any questions that are that are trying to answer part of this. I think they're trying to, I think they're kind of like, they're all, and creating what I will.
Who's we talking about first?
We'll take this up. Okay, go ahead, Seth.
Okay, so my name is Nancy. I'm originally from South Africa and I came here to school in Victoria. So I've been in Victoria for four years and I graduated from Victoria. So when I graduated from Victoria, I came to St. Joseph's Hospital as an intern. So I went in, went to Texas license, so Texas licensing, that was in two thousand seventeen. And George Evans by that time was the name. So when I came in, I came as an intern and I was doing my last program. I was graduating that way, so so all of two thousand thirteen. Actually sixteen and seventeen I'm working as an intern. So after I did my internship, I was sponsored by Samuel Brannow, Angelo Benjamin, and Radio Way. So the whole game was supposed to be in, actually sponsoring meaning, the paper that I gave you meaning that to say. I mean, if if, like I say, if. I mean, even one person, so even one person meaning that if I graduate in a bachelor's degree, I can work somewhere. Especially if a president or a company say we sponsor you. So when I came during that time, I can be in support of the faculty staff to work in the university. So my problem, I've been working with St. Joseph's Hospital, and I never had a problem. And I never came to a situation where I had any problem with any employees, any employees would know me. But until recently with this administration where I was putting HR. I'm gonna put it back and say I teach a lot of several different departments where I can take the license. I was finance department, I was personnel, and I went to building consulting, and now I'm dating Air Truck Department. So pretty much I need to be experiencing both of those in that department. So when I came in in HR, actually I had to work with my director right now, Mr. Elizabeth Rappage. And first of all, we get any problems. But now I have to speak up because we should not speak up. And this is because I feel like I've been wrongly targeted and I have a voice to say what I feel like I have to say. And at this point, and I feel like I'm wrongy. I was wrongly done because you could not have especially given that pay. So the reason why she's saying that I don't have any information for me to work for St. Joseph's. So and then the thing about it is. This, when the way you came about it, it came about as a target because it started in September. So it's like a great spirit from September to now. I've been working hard. And when I'm working hard and I've been feeling uncomfortable coming into work. And the thing is, I don't know who to share it to because now the Air Truck Department is more like a place where nobody can come in and express how they feel to all the employees. So now I'm speaking to myself because I also don't have to express it to anybody or to hear me out with any problems that I'm going through. So those, like, I've been reading out, when I first came, I was reading out, was, I mean, one of the employees. They suspended me a month. They suspended me for two weeks. I mean, that was like ten days without pay. So when this suspended me, I had to request and that was never done in the proper procedure. So I had to request for them to hear the hearing. So pretty much what I'm trying to say is I've been blamed for certain things that I can do. So when I'm being blamed, every time I get right up, they always, every time I write up, they always bring up immigration status. So ever since that time, I've been bringing up, they always bring up immigration status, until last Monday. So last Monday, they came to call me and tell me we cannot put you like this especially without pay. So my question is, if St. Joseph's wasn't me, the first time when I came in here, I'm not, if you talk about immigration law. We allowed to come and wear this. Then if you come in and don't organize, they should say, well, we need to sponsor you. If that was that I made you, actually, you might write that I think, honey, and say, you guys are going to sponsor you. So by the time when that happened, we have different administration in terms of St. Joseph's and the presidential administration. So also the immigration laws change to their day. So meaning that if immigration laws change to their day, we have to keep up with it. So we, it's, HR was supposed to keep up with my situation, immigration law. And at this point, I feel like nobody's helping me with this situation. I say when I'm asked to be sponsored, so nobody's giving me out.
Okay, but Ms. Nancy. Do you have a question?
Because Ms. Nancy is asking for a sponsor. So Ms. Nancy, do you know when it takes to to become or as a sponsor?
So since I'm already working in the government sector, he, the charge, he actually explains that, like, you work in the private sector. It would give you some, no money if you work in the private sector. You only have, okay, when you sponsor me, that means that it's going to be a hell. Which is sort of really rough, it's a four thousand to nine hours, that's a private sector. The thing that I want to do in the government sector, the thing is going to be much way, so it's going to be this amount that we expect. Much of it is in action, so it's like I say, we're willing to sponsor you and we're willing to support you. So that's what I'm requesting on. That's why you wanted to take any minutes for you guys to help me. Because at this point, I don't have a job and they wouldn't manage especially if without pay. I don't have no family. My family is at home. I'm not asking to go back home. At this point, if I have the option to, next week, I have to go back home. All I can say is. Many years. From second year to second half. I I feel with all culture, Somali, African, Olandian, I I feel you. Now, all I can say is keep your head on and have faith. Because there's a God somewhere. I I fear you because I I heed in your voice, I understand. So I just want you to say, I. I fear you.
I just want to ask something so that we can have our way. Did you you get a city council permission with your HR records?
Yes.
Any other questions? And next, we have, just, if we could follow up on that and make sure we request an HR record.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and start. What you feel, update on, first thing I want to mention, though, National Night Out. So we're working to do the National Night Out or the National Night, she's over at the wheel, I hope in the other day. So some of the things involved with the National Night Out was basically where community would come out and engage this weekend. Just talking, create a sense of, create that concept, a sense of community back for ourselves. This is going to take place August fifth, technically between six P M and nine P M at Block Park. There's some of the people, or they're not there yet, that's probably still between six P M and nine P M at State. So some of the, speaking with people, or some of the people that you've already spoken with, or made contact with, five hundred, we bring out like thousand houses. So Chief Edwards, he advised, you know, trying to get wildlife, get the animal comfort. And animal hospital, just like this, that scene, Block Park, record service, just spreading that business to come out. And kind of just gauge with the law enforcement. And so that's one thing. That's that's going to be mostly what I want to update on. The other thing, probably nineteenth, they had a board meeting, four or three. And councilman playing ball, playing all right in the board, so a great turnout. People are getting and and more involved, people are speaking, speaking up more about some of the things that started going on in the community. And I just encourage, you know, when you have a board meetings, just bring somebody, be and come with some questions. And come just ready to, you know, have some good dialogue and get everything you want to get out. And so those two things are things that I wanted. The other thing that I wanted to mention and in the videos that I've been waiting too much. I'm just gonna go ahead and tell you, I'm not going to be a big crowd. I've been waiting too much for people that just didn't hear about what I had going on. And so I know I got plenty to talk, you know, within my five minutes right now. You know, speaking about, you know, right now, I went to a city council, you know, I went to the city hall today. And I just wanted to ask how you paid the money? And response was that I need to go to, see the mayor's office where the situation is ratified, that I don't know about. That wasn't answered. I really wanted to hear which, I still didn't have anything, Sarah Barstil, she gave me that, you know, I left after that moment. And my point, to me being ready to nice, is that in this very moment, I'm owed twelve thousand five hundred dollars. When everyone goes home tonight, when they ready to pay, they're gonna be paying. When it's time to get paid, when I go home tonight, my money is still going to be stacked up here at City Hall. And that's at, that's at fault of the mayor, you know. You know, again, I've been waiting too much. When I gave this contract to U B A Defense, there were no objections, there were no edits. That should have been, you know, if anything wrong, that should have been addressed to the mayor right then. You know, and we got our whole people accountable, this Sarah Barstil, you know, she's not here to answer any questions. And I think she balls under the, you know, the council, it's the, Derek Dory, if I'm not mistaken. And so again, if the people need to go, they just need to go. We've been doing this too long and we're too nice not to say something. Maybe the council, or maybe, you know what I'm saying, some people shouldn't say anything, but as a citizen, if these people are not being held accountable, they need to go. And we don't need to wait, we set a timeline, let them go. We can put a most, I I know I can't put a most people forward, but I know I can speak it. And, you know, and the citizens feel a certain way, but also, I mean, that's who, you know, when people are put in positions by city council or the mayor or the city council president. All these are elected, you know, positions. And so ultimately, the citizens are who runs it. And so, you know, again, in these positions, these people need to be held accountable. And here is a motion that needs to go on the floor, that is Sarah Barstil or anyone else needs to leave. Or needs to be on administrative leave, or needs to have some kind of consequence, or not just myself, because it's bigger than me. You know, at the war, I had to say on, I had to say on war three that we didn't have any police representation. Because the mayor advised that that police are not going to come in here without his authorization. You know, what is that? What is that? That is, that is, you're trying to seize fucking safety, and they're trying to do that. Well, how long do I have to?
No, I think that's too long. You better forty seconds.
Okay, what I'm telling you is just like this Nancy came up, and I know Nancy, I can hurt when I start police. If you're in the police in the city, you better speak up because it's not him, it's win. Because when you don't do what people want, you're you're on the talking box. So I I guarantee you, you better speak up. Not a lot of people want to hear this, I want a lot of people to talk. Nobody wants to touch, nobody wants to do this thing, and it's just gonna linger. And when it lingers, nothing is done. So, you know, if you don't speak up and give people space, you you might as well not say anything. So I encourage you, if you're scared, come to a meeting and say something.
There'll be a question. So, what we say, we, you know, I don't remember correctly. What we say, we decided that if we. Basically brought this contract to us, we put.
Oh, sorry.
So 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 now. And just just to be clear, the mayor was the, yeah, totally the vote. Prior to the contract being voted on, he was also a total, so. A leader of the executive branch chooses, since he was not in favor of the contract, city council approved. He chooses to hold your mansion. That's our leader, people. That is our leader. So so now the the law enforcement came and comes to the public safety board meetings. That's what was, you know, that's that's what I'm still from, Mark.
And I want to address one, he talked about the National Night Out. Reason why public safety committee, we brought this, you talking about this month to month. It's about National Night Out because our first response, several police and we have five departments. And, you know, we have, it's time, it's time for all of us, the city itself, to do things, come together. It's not a one nation, it's it's the people. The people have a voice, and it's the people themselves. So I would like to ask this, I feel good research on this, we had a, we have National Night Out. You have with family group, family, kids, we have everything, bachelor, everything. And it's supposed to happen at Block Park. It's supposed to be happening at Block Park. And also, we have, we would like to find out, you know, is a public, is a, is a, is falls upon the ninety-four point people. And we would like to have a reactive balance, the flashing, and the T-shirt to be given out to our first responders. They have on the five apartment, the four apartment, and also some of the council member, the mayor, it includes the whole entire city. But we want to have a good night. We've been working on this one minute and. Christie, Councilwoman Christie Thomas, and President Yildan, and me, I've been telling them, we have to use the G I C. And, you know, we'd like to do that, y'all would like to ask our trade, who's not here, to, it would go over the, our American Rescue. Fund, that's what we should use that to give the the items that we need, because it's it's a part of us.
As we all know, that the city council expects our. Representation. To represent us and to lead us in a way that we should be going. So maybe, again, I apologize for what you're going through. And I know words cannot express how we all feel about what's happening within the city. But I ask you, Mr. Mealy, Mr. Ledman, those that are not being paid. Their contracts with the council that's going on, I ask. That you just be a little bit more patient with them and allow us to get the answers from our turn.
So I do, I want to respond that my my patience is going to work, man, I'm gonna be honest with you. I I appreciate the words, I appreciate words and everything else. And, you know, I've been in a lot of conversations with a lot of different people. And I feel right now, if you're not, if you're not hitting me on, not just me, because I don't want this, this is a me thing, because. You know, this this is not religious, like, I said, this, who else has this happened to? You know, we don't know this a lot that we say that, but if you're not, if you don't see the magnitude of what's going on right now. I mean, nothing is being targeted, you know, it's not just about us. Of course, I want my money, but I'm willing to take those values, go to this one, if you just fight with me, just fight with me. And, you know, again, you know, if you're not willing to be on getting me paid, I'm just, first, if you're not willing to get me paid. You are against me. That's all I can say. You know, I'm not talking about this saying. No, no, I I should say, I'm just, I'm just speaking to anyone, because everyone in the city is to see what's going on. So that's my statement that I just made. Yeah, I'm gonna let you guys, I'm gonna let you guys work, yeah, uh, go ahead.
I'd like to say this to you, uh, we asked the president last, county, had he sent those questions that came from the state to take care of. He's supposed to have sent those, those, those questions to the, uh, attorney of the vote. And by the seat, you don't waste, you don't waste time, he, uh, so if, uh, if, uh, President Young has sent, sent these questions. You can guarantee you're gonna hear something from by the seat very soon.
I have got some.
It's it's my only question, the questions I can say.
You will hear something.
Uh, and and, Mr. Mealy, I just want to say, like, for your health, or being, uh, not.
Oh, that's awesome, I appreciate it.
You're always very good out, and I'm appreciating you, thank you for talking, go ahead. I have a matter right now, uh, not to y'all, just to deal with, but I did want to say, there's, there's one thing he didn't mention that I want to. That's one thing he didn't say that I want to, nothing, he came out of my office today, I was actually having a meeting with all the coworkers, that's why I didn't call. So I wanted to go there, uh, both the citizens, the city by street, both of them, and the, uh, she matched, you know, when I'm meeting today, in my office. Uh, the other day I heard that was that I told this to you, because my mouth, whatever, to whatever extent that is, my mouth, what's going on with the diamond. She's not being talking, that I just want to respond to that, that's all I want to say.
But they, they.
Sorry, I can, I can respond.
They said something.
That's not absurd, you know. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, play it, all right, uh, we're gonna go, uh, thank, thank the all the citizens, uh, for your request, and I'll wait a second. I really appreciate you talking about the board council, uh, announcements, does anybody have any announcements? I'd like that, I'd love that. Go ahead. Uh, in your prayers and also, you know.
Uh, I guess, what, thank you, I had so many focus, so many parts, so many prayers. You know, we thought, who is here, we don't know, I don't know, and to have you, to love you, it was great, I had to make sense. That different wars called, and, and, you know, it's hard, but I have you on, uh, I thought I was ready to come back, but, you know, he is, I have to. But, uh, I'm, I'm, keep on pushing, you know, because my husband was sick, and and I know he was gonna come back to his business. But just make sure, you know, because I see, he loved, he signed on his face, and he had talked to me, and I already had, maybe more of some activity. So when you have opportunity to, we would hustle thirty-five years, and he likes to go back. I just wanted to say, you all, what you've done, stop by, and, um, I. I already have my job, I'm good guys.
Right, anyway. Uh, any, any other, oh, yeah.
Uh, just want to make this, uh, now towards, uh, since, uh, this month, we will have our first meeting, uh. The second Monday of next month, uh, we plan our meeting, and I would make sure that everyone that lives in wards seven. Know about this meeting, because I want them to come out, uh, to this meeting, and want to give them update. And let them have a voice, to speak on some of the things that, uh, that we've been working hard on, trying to get out of you. And I want everybody to pray for our Lord, because every time we get a Lord, uh, just about, you know, calm down, some of the examples. And I want to pray for this baby, this young, this young, this young man, nine years old, he comes up, I want to pray for him, since a child. He got shot, and, um, I just want to continue to pray for us, and people don't know how hard we work, trying to keep the community together. Just trying to keep the neighborhood understanding, we have a community run down, over on the rest, abandoned houses, we had a fire. We had a child got shot, same time, like, we had a fire, and and kids are busy. So we gotta keep our eyes on children, as a family, we, we gotta put it together, because, uh, when something happens, and I go, it is you. And I know some of the county people, I have a call, and talk back, and, uh, because they worry with me, uh. I can't rest from things like that, I've been doing this before, I don't want to see a baby killed, you know. And, um, I just want people in wards seven, we gotta look out, take care of one another. Because those, these kids are our keys, and we have to talk to them, and we have to encourage them, lead them in right way. So I'm, I'm gonna have that meeting, because it's a good piece of work, I'm trying to get, uh, a little bit of that to, you know, attorney general. Because I, I, I just, you know, when you try to, when you're doing right, God has you doing things, trying to do things, to keep the community together. Bible is not the way, we've been fighting Bible for so long over there, uh, with all the murders and issues that we have been through from twenty, twenty-one to up to twenty twenty-two. Uh, God is with us, and I just want people to, uh, he don't want to, he don't want to turn out with abandoned houses. Because you put it on your drive, and the house was so cold, and it's hot now, the side get out of control, they get somebody else good out. So we gotta have a meeting, we gonna have a fellowship meeting, we gonna have a meeting where we can bring each other together, and talk about some of the things that we can do for our community. Trying to get, that's why I want him to come and speak, I would love him to come and speak, and let us know. The things that we've been trying to do up here, is for the good of people, is for the good of people. And, um, I just want my, my council member, and have, they, they're all like, I'm going, whatever, we will do. So you always got a different side in the area, might have a nice environment, you might have a little kind of, you might, you have my, my area that the neighborhood is run down. And it takes all of us together to work, it takes all of us. So I'm, um, that this meeting is going to mean a lot to all of us, to come together, and, you know, see what we can do, because I can't take it. If a baby get killed in wards seven, I'm at the age now, uh, there, um, when something happens, I take it home. And I, I, I don't know, I just, it bothers, bothers, we can baby each other, it bothers.
It's kind of, it's kind of taking out a little bit of the, of the, of the.
On August the twentieth, or ten to twelve, I'm gonna have a change of line, because when you look at the weather, it it has a big, that one fifty five, plus hundred degrees in August. And I know I have to see the citizens that don't have, uh, the COVID, uh, COVID, so I'm gonna do fifty five states until war four. And he's telling you whenever we're not run out, but, um, we'll make sure that happens, because I know some of my dear fathers just. Some cities, maybe Sunday, you not have to turn ahead, and feel like a deal, so these five states, so I'm doing it, I'm almost twenty, so hard.
Almost twenty, uh, there's a, there's a chili, they all said, uh, from your contact. Uh, do that, just a, just a, please, pay off. Uh, and all of them, uh, any, any other, uh, house, uh, city? There are others, for, I, I, we're moving on to the mayor's report, or church report, turning to us, or just want to remind, we have not got, uh, any, uh. So I don't want to drop that, I was just, I recently, I asked this, let me know if she got, I just reset her, uh. That was the initial report, and the, uh, amendment to the ordinance. Being for family, was reset, I actually, that was the first one, that's one. So that, uh, we, uh, we could add on, we could reset that, so, the original report, and the amendment, or, 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 the ordinance has been to the, and application, or, uh, permitted to protect. Have you, have you sent that, or, 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 or?
I didn't break my.
I didn't, okay, right. And all I can verify that was that I said, spoke the same thing, go. Right, right, all right, so, uh, right, mayor for, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, uh, wanting to very cool, I'm six, I'm very, very, very. Questions, uh, that, that basis that you might do, uh, there's any discussions we have, uh, we're all, uh. Before that, I just want to stop here, I want to pass, uh, the mayor's report, number one, uh, transfer of funds, uh, from the fire department. Uh, there's a brand of council, uh, there's a, there's a mayor council, there's a request to, just, uh. Uh, number two, uh, purchase of extrication tools, given the fire department, a memorandum, letters, mayor council, a resolution. Uh, a request to adjust budget line items, purchase requisition, and then in May, go to location. Uh, number three, uh, Bush Hall equipment donation, uh, that is from prior call, uh, to the council, uh, resolution, uh, that. Uh, for purchase of vehicles from the tax clerk, uh, there's a memorandum, council, there's a memorandum regarding the purchase of vehicles. There's a memorandum regarding the use of phones, there's a memorandum regarding American Rescue Plan consultant. Uh, there is a resolution, uh, there's a purchase requisition for vehicle number one, uh, capital, uh, that, for vehicle number one. Purchase requisitions for vehicle number two, capital, uh, that, for vehicle number two, a request to adjust budget line items. City of Salem, American Rescue, by, uh, project, number five, approval of agreements between the city of Salem and Department of Environmental Management. And out of the Department of Transportation, natural resources, uh, via the planning and development department. There's a memorandum to the council, there's a resolution, there's a contractual agreement between the city of Salem and the Department of Environmental Management. A, 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 in terms of this, uh, added, addition of updated structures from the birth department. There's a memorandum with the council, there's a memorandum with the mayor, a request to adjust budget line items, a request to adjust budget line items. I like having that, I noticed that there were no addresses in that, and no resolution, so going to that, uh, and no contract, I think that will be, will be more information from that, sure. Number seven, purchase of three A C units for the former art center, uh, from the public buildings, uh, department. There's a memorandum to the council, memorandum to the mayor, airboat, eating the air bid quote, Dallas air conditioning competing quote. Normal getting there, the finance repair invoice, uh, resolution, a purchase requisition, and a request to adjust budget line, I appreciate that, because there are three quotes in there. Uh, and, uh, number eight, uh, updates from the treasurer, the city. Uh, any, any questions, before we go?
No, ain't no question, we did.
Do it, do it, do it, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
I told them the house is done, we tore it down, I have to look into it, we have to, we have to.
Right, and then how it gonna be for now, and and officially have a resolution to accommodate that, leaving our procedures. Uh, all of that had to be in resolution, for, for our procedures, and and how we were gonna do it, now, because we pay for each one of ourselves. Because we have to go through the amount of each house, believe, and and that's, that's all, so, process, that's like, we both have. Uh, so, go ahead.
Um, since we're talking about that, um, the ones that we have voted on in the past, have they done? So what's the process? Why does it take so long? By, why we should have deals, and they're not getting, they need.
So, so, the next one, process, I think, would be now, but, but, the, 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 right, it's, it's, it's what I'm saying, right? So we.
I think, why are we voting on something that's not getting done? That's what I'm asking, that's a good question. You're bothering that.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question, since, since the treasurer's report's not a part of the mayor's report, did I miss the financials? I I saw an email that had three pages in it, uh, I was almost, it had three pages? I never saw them hanging up, let's see.
Yeah.
Do you want to say that one go with that?
Yeah, then she sent, then she sent it, and I had three pages, but there was a test, but.
It's not, it's due, it's the, uh, council's due, it was your good job.
But, but, so that, that, D P R, as it's referred to, the United Force of War, was just for the council, uh, just for the council, I, uh. There was a, uh, June. That's very, 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 just, yes, this.
Maybe it should be you and.
The way you're looking, I'm gonna be, uh, scientific, government enforcement is just coming right along, getting it? Coming right along, we got all these houses on this list, we skipped those, and then we bring a whole nother list.
We need to go down, it's not a bad.
The recreation department cannot communicate with our coaches, executive committee, baby, we're knocking it out of the park. We got issues in the personnel department, we're knocking it out of the park, financing committee can't give us financial support, the executive team is hammering it, guys. If y'all wondering, they're gonna top everything, every problem in this city is because of these goofballs sitting up here. Executive, I mean, the public works, it's hammered, y'all see that we told them, we, 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 we blew up anyone? Who, we're smoking, baby, the executive branch is on that roll.
Um, I think, uh, the, uh, we did get a, a, uh, city council meeting report, a budget performance, a payment fracture. Uh, seven days ago, it was, uh, dated, or, June twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, uh, so, and it has, it had a roll up account, uh, for, for, dated, uh, June, uh. Uh, that is, that was, yeah, March, uh, March, uh, so, seven days ago, came from the South.
You didn't, you didn't make sure that that's a part of this, online, but just, what the date was?
Uh, I think, well, this is still, right, I like, uh, the, the, uh, yeah, from the, instead of March, yeah, so.
And northerly is that email, there's someone representing issues with the city, and, and never really been getting help from that.
There are people that want to be, that's why I had to switch, because my city, you know, my, my, we want to explain.
Yeah, it's on. Yeah, all the partners, uh, and, uh, and we can, I will say, a lot of these meetings, I can, uh, in, uh, this year, sort of, uh. Um, if, if there's issues or something, we can say it there. When we did, we did, uh, I almost called that for. All right, there were thirty four. I, I have to go with you. It's the second thing. We can. We just wanna, we just wanna, uh, pinpoint your highlights. How was that your items exactly? That's exactly about that. Uh, the first. Higher concern of import. The bulk from Billio Carter. Uh, so that was already eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. And, uh. The, uh, the boss is attached to the report. The resolution. I took the resolution R two thirty eight. That's twenty one slash twenty two. This Alabama delegation settlement concerning opioid. They are actually two settlements. That have provided to the firm. Two of the firms adding. The opioid litigation have sent paperwork. To request that. A resolution be provided for your. Uh, discussion and approval. Uh, to receive settlement. The amount was not listed because there is. A division of the proceed access takes place. And it's here all the pay ends. But we're being asked to approve the settlement. I think, uh, I'm, I'm. Approved for. The proper paperwork to be signed to a settlement. So that's item two. Uh, there are six items. I've got three of those. Three information groups. There's items three, four, and six. Item three is information. Where an individual, private individual is requesting. To donate property to the city. I don't know that we should do that because we don't know. Previous use of the property. There could be a phase one environmental. So surface issue that we don't know about. And maybe we ask to.
But it's not illegal. Right?
Or is that, excuse me?
It's not illegal for somebody to donate.
Oh, no, 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 no. There, there is a procedure that was employed in the back. I was about to accept it back from. Yeah, like those things like. Still just check out, uh, check, check those all out. I, 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 I just want you to know that the. Actually, request is there a picture of the property. And I've communicated with. I think development and tax and licenses.
I have a question for, for the attorney for what I talked about there. Attorney, so why are you so adamant about not allowing? This company or these people to donate these, these lives to the city? Because this is not the first time you brought that to attention. What, what was the issue you made?
The issue that was questioned. Of whether or not the lines of executive that's. Probably wrong. I think it's stuff. Any donation that the state requires the power. That's all. I'd like the message people don't leave. Either way. I would comment about, about. Property being donated and if there are base one issues. They pass it all along. If, if any kind of issues. Need, need remediation. They are not transferred. The liability is not transferred. When they transfer. Any kind of thing transfer. So therefore, if I gave the city a piece of property. Uh, and I have old gas technology. It contaminated the whole lot that I gave. Is not seized property. Considered as a problem. We had a gentleman who was saying that about. Yeah. Before a lot of. And, um, I, I, I had problems that been. And, and just a reminder too, that with that decision of the council. Just like the procedures of one hundred dollars. We thought she would. Cheers. This is just a, just a. You can settle it off. You can settle it off. Yeah, that's, that's not. There is, uh, this, uh, I'm, I'm. I said to the. That was. I don't know. Four, three. I don't know. Four. So recent virtual meeting statutes that are fair. That statutes do it with my report. Thank someone requested. See if by eight days long. The main change is. That you can hold virtual meetings. But you have to comply with statute respect. As, as setting a place of policy. Or if I pay, or you have to get over those. Virtual meetings. Uh, and ordinance one twelve hour. Oh, oh, one twelve. Twenty one slash twenty two. Is the revision of ordinance. One oh six, oh, one oh six. Fifteen thousand sixty four. They don't have basically these. Of one thousand and fifty nine. Late. Uh, and the other item we just discussed. Transfer. Uh, I'm sorry. This is the, the, the. Advocate, the ordinance for transferring the interpretative of property. To add that from the city to add that. Was presented based on criteria. So I just wanted to find. Okay. But did you, did you follow our parents' search of my truth? Where we had a public area of. There is no need for a public here. Uh, this is probably the public transfer of that private. Uh, and. That's the reason you can't have it. There was no requirement. Did I see it? Uh, any questions for the.
We can't get them. We can't ask them. We got no method for this to read. So they get. Count me to me. If something we put that on the table all day, we have no way to understand.
Okay, um, I will wait on this. Sorry. Smart town, not wanting to.
Good night. Morning.
That was. Uh, with your festival.
The team sport is on with your action. Um. I don't think it's ten to love it myself. And, and to reserve that team sport and get that battle. Looking really good. I've got several, um, people to talk out. I haven't got a quote yet. I'm really trying to. I'll just say that. I'm trying to, we don't. You're running deep for us tonight. I'm not committed on. Take care of, that's gonna be my main project for this year. And, um, it is, it's gonna be beautiful. Yeah, I'm gonna have it all pretty. And, and it's gonna look good. Always wrong. It's not connected to that. We're gonna have to. This is, is a city team. Having a great time.
Uh, yeah. That, that. We got.
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we're. Talking, um.
I think.
I've been working for someone that. The team sport was gorgeous themselves. So we got kind of. Be beyond. And we do both of that same. So we think. Why is that?
And, uh, and.
I have to say.
Uh, sorry, you're not there. Didn't we have a forum that you didn't accept for some reason? That there were four words. Tomorrow's day. So, and one of them, I was thinking was doing sports.
Maybe it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next thing I want to do is my child. I have talked with Ross Exmitt. And he's come out and going tomorrow for. You don't think I have all that. I'm not. We gotta do this. I, I mean. Hey, I. Going ahead. I was like, no, y'all, I'm gonna pay you the money. So I'm, I'm. And he's gonna give you a full run around next week. And I would have it. I won't be here too. So this time about hours going to. Uh, most of shows. So. Uh, uh, he's safe. With your. Yes. And he's gonna, he's come right back. The next thing is I want to bring back that you be patient. And, um. I like to ride around the park. I love doing the yard. And I think that's incentive. Maybe it'll start picking up trash around the yard later. You start by giving rewards for doing what you do best. So I, I want to be, I want to take the initiative. Get that back started. I'm checking with, I think the judge. Might have had that before. So I, I, I'll check. Uh, her to see what. She did to make it work. I, I'm not trying to. And then just trying to bring it back. And I think in the next one is. I'm talking about it abandoned because this house when she left, she loved it. He was jacked. I had to leave the whole cap to tear down this house. I've been selling them the house on San Philip. Off the first avenue. It's falling down. The kids are walking through their door to school. This house got burned down. It's already spayed. Looking toward that. Nobody did anything. This house is still falling down on a major street. And.
Get heard.
I've been burned this past year. Oh, yeah, so I'm. But this house. The thing about it is this house to hear kids walk the school board. And. You tell us a lot. Why we, why are these kids going inside? And going around with trying to. I see, and they keep falling in. And I don't know who to do. I'm a little child right. I've been reporting several times about first avenue. Our kids are tired and going, you know, playing. People going there taking tea. When they take a tea, your bed goes falling out. So I'm begging that we need to take care. I know we got us. But I'm just, I'm just. I'm ready for that. The general below tree. Now I'm like, oh, I saw one, somebody's. We need to take care. It's on right like. Yeah, we don't take. We look at our. For these.
Well, I, I explained it. Uh, and the work we're making out of that. We make this house around. Um, that property values. There's. Uh, uh, banks are able to load bugs, develop. All bugs. Uh, 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 such. Uh, you got the. Uh, there's, there's several advantages that I think. The, the cost of tearing down the houses. Wouldn't come back as a tempo. And I think, I think it's more of an investment. Any, any questions for the councilwoman Jane about her four items?
No.
Okay, I'm all. We have real quick. Trees, I'm just, I got a quote. Uh, I'm gonna get still. I sure have a report Tuesday. Those are the structural laws. Gets trees down. I have the trees up. Um, the, uh, main tree I know. Uh, it's something that I wanted. To invite her about it is the, uh. Uh, August. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And a lot. Is the, is the main tree I know. This, this is a great. Generally, I would help. Right, three years. Which have. Naturally, so. Uh, so is actually. The, was the oldest main tree organization. Say, sort of, like, eight, three. Uh, and, and I have some structural there. Cause I was hoping something else. I'm gonna be able to do some next. Uh, year. So I just wanted to let them try to. I was going to thank registration. To understand. Uh, how that was. You have a good that was held by the whole city. Uh, so if anybody wants to go. Swearing over. And I'll make sure we get that. Always. And they will always spend. But.
What's the point?
Um.
I was thinking about. I had to read in the bag. I don't know. He was a. Sticker. I know we had one time.
Yeah, yeah, still. I was, I'm actually the chair of the station. And as soon as somebody wants to go, I'm willing to pass the tour. So.
We got.
You know, I invited the. Recompense for the one. Uh, in some cities, the recall of the horse is my. Uh, so, yeah, I invited there. Uh, Wanda and Zouk. And I'm not sure how we have the. But they, they take up the. Yeah. Uh, so if you think I was there. Just please let Mayor for the council know. And, uh, we can. Get that. Um. Uh, another thing was the, uh, big star grocery. Uh, on Dallas and King. I just wanted to remind everybody that the long period for this. Is, um, Tuesday at sixteen. Before the council meeting. So if there are any, uh, in favor or, or any against. Then we, you're probably, uh, probably. The council meeting people, uh, Tuesday at sixteen. And that has been noted in paper. Um, and we, we have all of the products. That's the chapter. That is, it would have to say sixteen on Tuesday. The same, same time of the meeting. And they'll just stand up and, and, you know, say a couple words. So I'm, I'm just saying. You know, just need to. Your neighbor watching.
Right. Were you closing?
Closing some. No, it's the big star grocery, uh, ABC.
Oh.
Yeah, they, there were some neighbors who were not sure about it. And just want to make sure everybody had a chance to. Um, uh, the last one, the shore district. So, uh, I've, I've got a quote. Somebody, uh, again, for a special area. Uh, to record the, uh. Uninhabited houses across the shore district. Uh, so that we can, uh. Begin recording down on them. Uh, for redevelopment. And it's just as simple as that. Uh, but, uh, there'll be, there'll be good pictures on the visual file. City of San Antonio. Uh, for redevelopment. Forces and that could, uh, the score. Commission. The score for the way to sign here. Uh, the, the budget. There are a lot of things about the budget. Uh, we. We got a budget. Uh, and, and I guess send that out to everybody. Uh, so this house. This afternoon. Uh, I saw. Where I personally. Uh, so actually, if she would send that out. It is a, uh. It doesn't excel on that. Uh. And it does not have formulas. So I just wanted to write that. Make that whole piece exactly correct. With the word rock formulas. Uh, so now we got an Excel spreadsheet without formulas. So, but everybody will be happy with that. Uh, okay. Any questions for me about? My, for, uh. Or my.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Uh, hey, Martin, but. We're still wanting to do what we normally do.
Oh, yeah.
Set up parents and all that. Set up parents and all that. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So we, you know, we got the calendar here, and I just wanna mention that to you, uh, and, uh. Comes from a lot of you, type that up, if you have a major question. Uh, yeah, if, if there's no objections to the calendar, I just. Yeah, I don't have any objection.
Just make sure your back come.
Make sure everyone knows.
Yeah.
You make sure everyone knows, you have good luck with that. You've got some overs.
Would you be, uh, maybe you want to start a season block, right?
Uh, yeah, so we're. Yeah, so, uh, just, just, just one bit of, um, clarification. And. What would the question be this year?
Yes.
Uh. And for those of you that have the proposal scout or. Or the star. August tenth.
Now we can build the labor. I'll do the labor, I'll just scout, Mars, and that's reason.
Um, I'm not gonna elaborate, I'll elaborate more. At another time. But. My request for the budget, the, the finance committee's request for the budget. Was not in the team to tell Mayor Burris how he needed to submit his budget to us. That he can do, there he was, he was his budget. I'm not, the finance committee is not trying to. Put him in a box and tell him what he has to do, that. We never tried to do that. The finance committee simply said it would help us if we had an Excel spreadsheet. So we can highlight things and make notes as we go through. Nobody's trying to tell her, Mayor. I presume. Budget, uh, special, make sure that's. Right, uh, and Mayor hopeful to number two, twenty four, or, or, anyway.
Everybody know that we, some people don't, but we should, I, I believe we would be in that day. The twenty twenty audit report, because, uh. We don't know what's in there, we don't know what, uh, what kind of report we're getting. We're going into our ways of talking about. Um. We want to look at it for things that, uh, what the data suggests. And, uh, we'll get rid of the end of twenty twenty two. And, uh, I know we, the, I do know that the audit report is there. And, uh. Uh, I mean, I'm doing, I'm doing, I'm sure that we have a, to turn out an asset for this, uh. We're gonna get our twenty twenty audit report. And, uh, I think all, you know, I have a right to call and find out. Because we're going into, uh, uh, we may go to our region. And, uh, they said that, uh, they tried to send, uh. Send in the signature to, and then the sign, but their email, they came back. And he called, he called Terry. And, uh, then, uh, she said that, uh. No, they was gonna get it, see, see, send it again. So hopefully, it is ready, there were no two signatures that is mayor and her. And then he said he will. Let it go down, he said. So I'm gonna make sure that we have. I'm gonna make sure we have when we start out, we have something to look at. Come from the audit, but he did tell us that, um. Between the acts were, will they be twenty twenty one? No, there will be another person, another audit. Firm will be doing it twenty twenty one. So I'm just, I just told us that. We do have, we need to have a proper two, five months to look at. See what we have. We need an audit. We need to see what grade we have. Do we have another A, or what, do we have a B? But do we have a C L D? We just need to know that that is the title. And I'm hoping that we meet that.
And I, I want to, I mean, so, so. If I understand correctly, the audit is to be read over, that's, uh, according to state statute. Uh, when, when we get that audit, it says that it is to be read over the best, so. Uh, I believe we're supposed to actually have the audit or the court for us. That at, at official city council meeting. I mean, I believe we requested that, and I'm not sure where the law will have. Secretary of Health, can you, can you send that one up for testing? Yes, I think, I think the two thousand nine's, uh, for, he's to grab, uh, that, that. We need to know where. Where we are from, joining on. Like, that, that means.
What, what she's making of that, that, that correct, or that she's simply have. Her experience is that it would all work with us. How many people we get that?
Oh. I got, I got another.
Another council person, another council person for a year and a half, and we still can't figure out how to run with it.
Your family kicking back.
All right, go, go ahead.
Uh, my next one is, uh. My next one is, I had to, you know, my, my constituency, they need a lot. When this put a work order, if that could work on. I'm gonna, okay, I just gave them a work order to the, to the, uh. Complete work order for the area, put the sign work order. And now, when I say, um, when we want to say more service under. Of course. It's not fair to us that all these work orders that we put in. Our audit, for over two years, in something we can't afford by ourselves. In addressing. Also, the one whom Carol, the mayor and the director of public work looked at. And they, they haven't done anything yet. So this is, she had been, this is, this is on the city side, but. Our home is city on this side, and, but the move, it, it been like for the last. Three or four years, we've been trying to get this taken care of. When I had an engineer, I, he said, it's a public work, easy fix. Okay, we kept putting it back in. She came to vote and told us. They looked at it, no one knew when you done. So you be, you be patient, so we gotta take care of her issue. We gotta take care of, uh, Carol Street, on the main, because they're crazy, they're, they're dry light. And the whole, the more rain, the whole, that people need. And thank God that there's no kids right in that area. But, uh, I, I'm gonna come back Tuesday, but I'm waiting on the, well, vote, on, uh, to get this taken care of. Uh, this is what we do to, uh, take care of your, your, your constituency problems, of course. So I'm gonna take care of that, and the other, the other, uh, work orders. I'm just waiting for them to, uh, follow, to what we're gonna learn, because it doesn't make it acceptable. Put the sign back on the gym. And you already the man, uh, I said, give the signature to them. And I'm not getting it, it's not fair to us. We voted for the equipment to get done in our work. We voted, what, we voted for the backhoe, voted for the seagull turn, we voted for side cutting. We voted for, this kind of voted for everything, and it's not fair that. Certain laws get all the attention, get everything done, and. Nothing, never be on the agenda. Uh, about their issue. Uh, never be on here, but I have mine on here, and that's why it's important to record. It's important, they say, when you, when you, we speak about stuff, and you keep constantly, and it's not, then you come to the point. Just, uh, no test that we're not being truthful. Um, we voted for the equipment to be. Side cutting, we didn't have one yet, uh, I asked for a work order for side cutting, come in and do some things. When, when you got a drain, and the grass that grow up in the, in the, in storm drain. That's what the side cutting should be doing, going in there, getting out. It, it, we speak, we voted for a lot, we be quick. And, and, and the litter bakers, we, we voted for, we have all the litter bakers. But, and, uh, so I'm just saying, it's a lot of things we voted for, you have to be fair, you can't get mad with a council person. Uh, they say, uh, because I don't vote in your favor, but I don't, I ain't elected which, I have to make sure that my vote. Is the right vote, or what we need. You can punish me and my people, because they, it ain't in your favor, it's not what we about. We're about doing these in city, city, right? People gotta get out of there, and, and some of your councils say, where your votes are, down, so, uh, come over and support me. It's recorded. A council person should say that to another council. You don't know who's being recorded. And it, it's not fair for you to say that, that I should make a deal, when I know it's not right. That it's not gonna help the city. So I'm, 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 I'm one of these people that don't give up, um, teach five, four, seven, because we live over there. I'm a citizen in that board, and we wanna live good and clean and cut down on that jungle, because we got plenty of jungle over there. And, uh, we wanna ride down the street so I can see, because I ride every day. I'm just like, oh, he's at, every corner I go on, I wanna see everybody, I wanna see what's going on. But we got, uh, the board over on, and you did everything that your, uh, citizen action. So I'm just, we're just gonna say, citizen, I will not give a, I live in four, seven, and we don't. In four, seven, and take care of all of them, seven, all the way across the issue.
If I can attest to that, so you will. Go ahead.
You can stay there for that, right, or if you can, yes.
Yeah, seriously, but, but let's.
There's one more thing. Uh, there's, there's a comment about, I think, uh, we could, we could draw, make a reservation twice for our guests. Uh, all, all, all of our government vehicles.
Yeah.
And that is a policy thing, uh, so they're right after this. Uh, and, uh. Sorry.
G P S.
G P S, yeah, G P S all. City vehicles. And, uh, and, and, I mean, because if we had, it's usually makes it so, and, and. That way, you can, uh, we have G P S. Uh, wherever, and, uh, you can run the reports, so you know where everything's been.
It's yours, guys.
Oh, yeah, it, it, wherever your insurance place, I, uh, that, uh, probably cameras. Uh, this, it, it, it shouldn't be a break in that city. And that way, I, I asked over the board for the maintenance plans and stuff like that. Um, at, at the last meeting, you know, I have, then everybody showed up, and, and, uh, and so, I'm, you know, I heard in my, it was impressive. I was told that's exactly, functions that I didn't get that fresh, or some sort of council committee, that question. So I think it's probably just, we just, uh, fail to get, uh, all secret. The G P S and all mobile assets.
All can be good.
All mobile assets. Uh, and, and, uh, I should fix, uh, their force will require, uh, force. Uh, so. And, uh, President, you know.
Yes, getting it right. Uh, I got a couple things, which I'll make a little bit of a shortcut. Stories coming, coming out, tough listening, so I'm just trying to prove it. Uh, quick reminder, on, at Tuesday's meeting, I'm going to actually put into the minutes. That we are formally requesting a full, uh, review of all the big old boxes. We've been asking for that for a while, we need to know when these bond payments are coming, and will they want to change? Because for understanding, some of these bond payments are going to pop out next year. And before we make the sound decisions on this budget, everybody, we need to know exactly how much more we're gonna be paying in monthly, monthly. And so that's why I'm going to be personally, uh, watching the budget, and I may not be as goosey goosey. Councilman Harvey, as I was last year, because those bond payments are holding up. We got to make those modifications in our budget. Uh, another thing that's not on the agenda, uh, everybody can get ready to close out this year, uh, switch their companies. Uh, those forms, uh, uh, we go in, uh, different groups making responses, councilman, councilman.
I would like to put a motion on the floor, on the floor. That Tuesday night, that we, that our restriction that follows, roll.
Okay, you can make that, I'm very, but there may be some requests that are coming through on Tuesday, you know, each house possibly is. So that form may be going around to all different groups, so we're gonna look out for that on Tuesday as well. Uh, I have a question about the, uh, ordinance, uh, regarding the family. Uh, Attorney Madison, uh, where are we going on the draft of that ordinance, and for us to finalize it?
Oh, it's a non-protocol, and I haven't got it, so I'm not counting, but, I was just recent. That was a wild one, that is TV.
Okay.
I, I get it, she said her. Send it to her.
Okay, were there any issues in terms of action on the, uh.
The fees, what? President.
Okay, so we'll be the, go on that Tuesday.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, another thing, uh, S R A, I believe, uh, there are, it may be two spots on S R A. If they're not up, they're coming up, on the Assembly Development Authority, and so we may need to go in and start, get ready to talk about that.
Yeah, I saw the reservation, two thousand seventeen, or six year ordinance, through December, fourth, fourth.
It was six years?
Six year ordinance, yeah, six year term.
Okay, so we know that.
I'll, I'll send it to you, actually, I got all the information for that, sorry. And when they reincorporate in, in two thousand seventeen, or December of two thousand seventeen. Uh, what is six years, I think, I think you were a six year term. Uh, and, 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 but, but, of course, you came off.
Right.
Uh, but I will send it, just to make sure.
And Mr. Attorney, do you have information for our S R A board, those, uh, terms?
We, we got, uh, uh, oh, oh, we, I'll, 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 I'll say, six years, each of, uh, the, uh.
Term. Sure, because I was told about the seven, by S R A, that two terms are up. That was about some members of the board, but that's why I want to make sure we, as a player, a member of the board took me, then they, uh, two of the terms were up. And so I just wanted to play the fiction, make sure. You need to make those appointments, please.
President, you had a permission provided, uh, last year, so we'll both, uh, double check.
Okay.
On this, all right, well, it's term.
Okay, to me, okay, thank you. Uh, August third, August fourth, we're supposed to be having, uh, Economic Development Academy. Just the third, uh, third, August the third, at four o'clock P M. We're supposed to be having the E B A, the Economic Development Academy, if we're going to lead, we're supposed to be meeting Council Chairman. Those must have all been a committee. Uh, we're meeting at four o'clock, August the third, so please keep that in mind also. Uh, and on August the fifteenth, at four o'clock, we're probably having another, maybe, maybe, hopefully every night, maybe, yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, you, you, you forgot about tree management, uh.
I forgot. You know, I'm gonna be saying.
Yeah, it, it, it did not even tell what we take a vote, that, uh, we're having a national night out. I need, we need to take a vote, uh, Tuesday night on the national night out, uh, you know, we have a, uh, at the block hall.
Right, and what I was, reason I, reason I, I, I forgot about it, I was going to get a report on my national night. So we might have a whole meeting just for that, and we bring that up on Tuesday, and do whatever we want.
Yes, that's what I want, because we got, uh, uh, balance, and we can, can, and it's possible on a, that could, point zero. It's all, uh, uh, focused on, and we need to order a vote to be, you know, the, the balance, I got it. We have order of public department, uh, he gave, see, all stuff claimed to be unobligated.
Okay, so, all right, let me go back, because I don't want to confuse it, about, revenue could be a meeting, August fifteenth, at four o'clock, okay? That's gonna be at four o'clock, and then the meeting, let me make sure about the E B A, that's gonna be at four o'clock, as played, on August the third, okay? And for this issue that Councilman Tom, uh, just got to talk about, regarding the public safety, public safety is not in the committee for that. We'll have to wait all of them, but for this issue that she just mentioned, we're going to go on that on Tuesday, on the national night.
And we can use Donna to bear, out of the, uh, out of the Mary to rescue, because of public safety. For event, for, uh, all of the city, city, city.
And Councilman, uh, Carmen, did you give them an update about your successful award meeting on Monday night, Tuesday?
Somewhat.
Okay, good, maybe you should bring it up again on Tuesday, but what's this, this, this?
Thank you.
You had an excellent, excellent meeting.
You had a good.
Yes, ma'am.
My next meeting, I will, you know, I will just, I said, okay?
Yes, if I am available, I will be there. If, if I am available, I will be, if I am available, and I haven't been available that many times. Uh, and it was after workout. Uh, then, uh, also on Tuesday, we'll talk about, uh, visiting, uh, last weekend here, so, there may be some opportunities that may be available. We'll bring that up on Tuesday. That's all that I have. Thank you so much.
And we want to make community reports, or we.
We go with the.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. They jumped.
Ready, y'all, for the.
I'm sorry, I don't want to get weird, I can go to the back. I got, I ain't missed all the good stuff.